Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We have a very exciting and enriching session now to be taken by Mr. Ronodip Moitro. Mr. Moitro is a former Bengal cricketer and a certified strength and conditioning specialist. He used to be with the Indian cricket team around a couple of decades back and used to do their strength and conditioning. So I know it's been a long day for most of you and probably that's the reason why we have kept it because this, as the session topic suggests, it is beyond the boardroom, discipline, hygiene and stress management for a fulfilling post corporate life. Most of us are of that age where vulnerability has already crept in. Now, what needs to be done to keep stress free in spite of a stressful environment that we all belong? And how to manage our bodies better, minds better and stay fit and healthy is what Mr. Moitro is going to talk about. So without further ado, Mr. Moitro, if you could kindly come and take the stage.
Thank you, Shabri. And thank you, thank all of you for being here and coming to listen to me. First of all, I am a strength and conditioning coach and a corrective exercise coach, but I don't have all the answers. But I will share parts of my life and I've worn many hats. I've had a roller coaster career and I'll talk about that, which has forced me to imbibe certain habits which you could put down as good discipline, good lifestyle. And it's helped me to not only cope but survive in this, let me, without sounding like a prophet of doom, an extremely hostile environment. Why do I say that? So when I said I'll have to share a little bit of my background with you to understand where I'm coming from and to absolutely absorb why I'm saying what my, what my concept or ideology towards fitnesses. So it's right, I was an ex-cricketer at about eighteen or nineteen. I played, I played under-19 cricket for India and I just made my debut for Bengal. And I was, then I started developing pain in my sacroiliac joint, which is really around the lower back area, and which was extremely debilitating and I was in bed for about six, six months. I was, I was in a tremendous trauma. And this is, you know, I'm talking about the year 1986, where medical science, at least orthopedic science or rheumatological medicine was not so advanced. And my condition wasn't diagnosed for a very long time. So it was, it was a struggle. I would play and many people thought that I was injured and was treated as an injury. Until finally, it was, I was diagnosed with a, with an autoimmune disease called ankylosing spondylitis. And I was told your cricket career has to stop. And I realized this many years later that it not necessary that I should have stopped cricket, but for lack of proper clinical guidance, I had to stop cricket. So one door was shut for me. And here is where I'm going to share my life, that I don't have the answers, but I've gone through some of, some of the lifestyles, some of the challenges that you people. So I was actually, I got into corporate life. When I said that there was no cricket happening for me, I, I joined a company called J. Thomas, which is the world's largest tea brokers and auctioners. And I was taught to be a tea broker, part of which was learning how to taste teas. So for many years, for many years, I was working as an auctioneer, trying to cope with my disease. Things were alright, but I still wanted to live with dignity because it was a debilitating disease, it was a degenerative disease. And I kind of knew that my future is going to be, will be tough. So I started reading up about therapeutic exercise. Got really interested because the only way I could survive this was through exercise. And I slowly found out that because I was in a ton of drugs. I was taking anti-inflammatory medicine every day and immunosuppressant injections. So I, and I thought that there has to be a way outside, beyond the medical system. There had to be an alternate way of fighting back. And that took me, that attracted me towards the world of physical fitness. And while I held a job, I, I decided to study. And I would come back from a typical corporate job, which I was, I was, and it was pretty challenging for a while. I was actually in a branch office managing myself and would come back late at night and I would sit with my books. I would study late into night and people would ask me why I was doing that. And I didn't have an answer because I didn't really have to change my career. I, anyway, so I became India's first strength and conditioning coach. Got a job with the Indian cricket team, my cricket background helped. But yeah, I wanted to still further find out about the human body. So I wanted to become a corrective exercise coach. And all the discipline and all the answers that I got is, is through this, through this wide experience. I could go on about my life, but that's not the purpose of this talk. So the first thing I'm going to, when, when we talk about stress and we talk about discipline, this is something that I learned to cope with myself. Because here was a survival, I've seen people die of this disease when, before they were, before they turned fifty. So here's the thing about, so what I'm going to do, I'm going to talk, talk a little bit about stress. I'm going to talk about training and then how each one of us can improve the quality of my, of your life and with exercise. Because the four real doctors that I've, I've found out in my life and that all you need, four real doctors are Dr. Quiet, Dr. Happiness. And I'm going to talk about the last, Dr. Quiet, Dr. Diet, Dr. Happiness. And if you've got all three in place, so what does Dr. Quiet means? Your reflective moments, your reading, you're listening to music, right? That's Dr. Quiet. Dr. Happiness is to be able to be happy, learn to be satisfied with what you've got and attitude of contentment. When I lost my world to cricket, I thought everything around me had, had just collapsed. But learning to cope, trying to see that there was world outside my ambition is, is what made, I think, made me a better human being. And talking about Dr. Happiness, if I had focused all the energy in, oh my God, my life is ended. And I did, for a while I would, I, I tried to hide things and forget things with other things. In the typical, I was about twenty-one years old, there was alcohol, there were parties, there were women. Not a typical twenty-one-year-old tend to go to, but that's all short-lived. I, when I found my purpose in life is, and I discovered that if you could help other people to get better, what had happened to me because of lack of knowledge, lack of, or, or around me, and that which includes medical and clinical knowledge. And believe me, what, what is really scary and sinister maybe is not much has changed in the last twenty-five years because I'm looking, I see patients now who, who go from one doctor's chamber to the other. Anyway, coming back to this, that when I've channeled my energy into helping other people, it put a tremendous force around and I could, and that's what I call the calming force. And I started, oh, I forgot I have a mic, I can actually go around, sorry. And I started discovering that my body was changing, my health was getting better. It can't be explained because, because for twenty years I've taken anti-inflammatory medicine every single day of my life. After that, I've taken immunosuppressants for the next, and yet, yet I have an kidney and liver intact. There has to be one good thing to all the bad things that I've done and that is exercise. And that is doctor movement. And I can stick out and say that exercise has the power to negate a lot of negative things in your life. You know, and going, I've seen people in the sports field, I've, I've seen Vivian Richards having six rum and cokes at night and before you could wink yet, he had ran twenty-five runs around the ground. Not to say that you need a two days athlete would probably not do that, like Djokovic would probably not do that. But I know and I can say that exercise has the power to negate a lot of negative things. It reverses that. I'm not suggesting that you should have six rum and cokes today and, and I try running tomorrow evening, but it has because I've seen it in my life. So there was Dr. Quiet, there's Dr. Happiness and Dr. Diet. If you've got everything in place, then doctor movement will help you to have a better life. But if you don't have the first three, and, and why it's important to have first three is, let me explain that there are two aspects in our autonomic nervous system. One is the sympathetic nervous system and one is the parasympathetic nervous system. So the sympathetic nervous system is, is really the fight or flight response to life's troubles, to stresses. And, and how beautifully the hormones in our body and our, and we, and our whole natural system is tuned to what we say called the circadian cycle of life is when we get up in the morning. The first thing at six-thirty, which is why you need to get up early in the morning, are stress hormones at, at the highest. So you, that is the time when you should be stressed because we come from a hunter-gatherer background, hunter-gatherer background. If you're not stressed in the morning, you will not go and get up and you will be eaten up by an animal, to put it very simply. You've got to get up and, and go and hunt for your family. So you need certain physiological changes to take place in your body early in the morning. Thus why our sugar levels are high, our adrenaline is high, our exercise hormones are high and a cortisol level are high. Cortisol is a stress hormone. So that's the time when we should be having the maximum stress. What happens in our life is as the dope day progresses and as sunlight drops and it gets darker, we start producing, so the, the cortisol was, that's the sympathetic nervous system where you should be at your best. There you, as it gets to evening, you start secreting the quieter hormones, which is the serotonin, melatonin will quiet you down and the parasympathetic nervous system takes over. Unfortunately, because of our lifestyle, we see most of the exciting things within each noise, sound, bright lights are all happening in the second half of your life. Therefore, all the stress that you're taking place at work is getting worse because your lifestyle is, is not allowing you to calm down. So if, if we get to, get to bed at ten-thirty and get up early in the morning and reverse it, so because all your repair starts, the physical repair in your body starts, starts at ten-thirty and it goes on till twelve-thirty, after will the mental repair starts. So my feeling that any amount of stress that you can cope at work, you will be able to handle if your lifestyle is in a position to, to fight these. And that's getting to bed early, using the serotonin, the calming hormones in your body, the melatonin and serotonin, serotonin. So that is what I mean by the Dr. Quiet and the Dr. Diet. So the path-breaking work in, it's pretty warm. The path-breaking work in stress was done a long time back and even as back as nineteen thirty-six when Dr. Hans Selley was an endocrinologist, he identified as a general adaptation syndrome. And he said, there are three aspects of stress. The alarm stage where your homeostasis is awakened and the stresses hit you the first time. The resistance stage, how your body resists. And, and finally, the adaptation, either you, you adapt to it or you break down. So that, that is the best way to, the best way to cope with stress is using your body's own hormonal system. And there could be questions regarding this that maybe later on I would. And the other thing is exercise. But exercise is, is a double-edged, double-edged sword. So we, okay, we train, we don't workout. So if you, if you enter, I come to one of my gyms, so there's on the wall, it's written, want to know why we train? And at the bottom, at, bottom of it is written, "For life, for life." So many people come to me, you know, I, I want to do this because I want to lose weight. I want to do this because I get muscular. And I said, you know what? You really don't know why you should be training. But I know in my life and other people's life, I've seen, you train to get ready for life's unforeseen contingencies. Whatever life throws at you tomorrow, if you exercise, if you're fit, you'll cope with it much better. And I, I always use this example and I'll talk about it today. There's one gentleman there at the back who I know, knows somebody called Anil Mukherjee. He was the CEO of Tollygunch Club. Now, Anil had a habit of, you know, not habit, he had a fantastic routine where he would go to the gym every day in his old world style. A lot of it was archaic stuff and I would tell him, Anil, can you stop working out like fifty years back? But he had his own routine, but the bottom line and the thing is that he trained. He trained till he, all his life. And when he was seventy years old, it so happened that he, he was diagnosed with prostate, with bladder cancer, right? So he had to go through chemo and all the other stuff. But I know when he came out of chemo, in a month's time, he was back in the gym and he was playing tennis with that external bladder. And I know that, what's, what's the connection? It's just that, A, if you feel, God forbid, have to go through fourteen-hour surgery, it's, it's your health that will, that will save you. And that investment in your health has to be made daily basis. It's just like you, you play insurance premium. So each exercise session is an investment, is a small premium that you play for your future health. Because when I say for life, well, Anil didn't know that he was going to get cancer. Now, I know many, Arul Lal had a sixteen-hour surgery where he had oral cancer and he survived through and his doctor said, the reason he survived the surgery is because he was fit. Yeah, so I always say if, if whatever life throws at you, you'll cope. But you'll cope it much, much better if you're fitter. So this is, this is how, how training differs from exercising. And I say, how is it different? And I always say that training is like studying and exercise is like reading. Reading is random, reading is random. But training is, is, is building knowledge vertically in, in a single domain or multiple domains over an extended period of time. Each dose of your exercise program is, is specified, is based. The constituents of that exercise program are such that they're geared towards a particular goal. And what should the goal be particularly for, for this, this population that I'm talking about, the age that you all are? The five pillars that I, I think are absolutely imperative of good health, I'll talk about. Number one is mobility. Number one is mobility, what does that mean? Every joint in the human body has a prescribed range of motion. And the ability of a joint to move through a full range of motion and not be restricted by connective tissue or, or fascia is imperative for, to keep, for the proper functioning of the human body. What do I mean by this? In simple words, there are many forms of exercise which doesn't put every joint through full range of motion. Yet people tend to say, oh, this is the best form of exercise or swimming is the best form or walking is the best form. So there really is no best form of exercise that looks after every joint in the body. For example, I mean, if I have to get technical for good, and you'll see how it's tied up with our primal, our evolutionary movement patterns. For example, for good movement, it's imperative that our ankle joint achieves a sixteen to twenty-two degrees of movement. For example, here's, if it's this ninety degrees, I should be able to achieve about twenty-two degrees of forward movement. If I can't, if my ankle, the movements that man, early ancient man had to develop, had to imbibe in order to cope with the hostile environment around them. So squatting is a primal pattern, bending, bending is a primal pattern. The correct way to bend is, and the correct way to bend is not the bookish way to, but the way we always, always in civilization, how we bent up and picked up a log of wood from the floor. So there's a squat pattern, there's a bend pattern, there's a lunge pattern, there's a push pattern, there's a pull pattern and finally, there's gait or running pattern. Now, what are the push and pull pattern, what do people go to the gym? Now, the human body works from proximal to distant. So if I open this door, if I open this door, the first movement should happen in the muscles that are close to my torso. So I don't know, open the door with my, all of us, every single member in this room is going to slip and fall in the bathroom when they're seventy-five years old. Some are going to cope, some are not going to cope. So, so when I say strength, what comes to your mind is this huge guy picking up a lot of weights. Now, why am I talking about strength? Most of the lifestyle disease that we tend to see, blood pressure, cholesterol, come down to just one. The evil, none of this is evil, the evil part is insulin resistance. Now, the, the most natural cure for insulin resistance, which later becomes diabetes, which is, is muscle. When you're strong, your muscle cries out for glycogen. Every time you eat and your blood sugar goes up, the pancreas has to secrete insulin because it has to send glycogen to the site where it's needed. So that's the natural cycle. And for every one kg of muscle that you add in your body, your chances of diabetes go down. So I need everybody's attention on this, cholesterol. My mentor, Paul Chek, says, please get your cholesterol up to three hundred if you want to be healthy. Yeah, you can check that out. Every single hormone in your body is comprised out of cholesterol. If you, you, you drop your cholesterol, you stop being a man. And I don't have to explain this because there are women in this room as well. You need cholesterol for every single hormone in your body. Incidentally, eighty percent of your, of your brain is comprised of cholesterol. Your strength comes from cholesterol, okay? So there's a, there's a, there's an absolute tendency to villainize, make cholesterol villain, to demonize it. So, and statins, the minute you start having statin, statins, it drops your cholesterol, your testosterone levels because you can't have testosterone in the body without cholesterol. Your muscles wing drop, you start, anyway, after forty, you're going to get something called sarcopenia. You're going to, every year you drop one percent of your muscle. Let me tell you, your muscle is your, is your best friend in your old age. Do whatever you can get, be, but get strong first. So statins is, is just, is just a drug company success. Okay? So I, um, get off statins, find a way to get off statins. And, and egg yolk is good food, he is good food and the best. If you go back and see, the healthiest, the healthiest cooking medium is lard, animal fat. Okay? Companies won't tell you that because there's, there's money elsewhere, okay? So the worst enemies, I, I was sitting next to him on college, just during my last lecture and the worst possible oil, the worst possible oil that I can use is seed oil, white oil, sunflower oil, the absolute killer. What, so you should be, if you go back in the, in the past when we didn't have heart attacks, most of us were using animal fat. So, so while not trying to offend sensibilities, so pork belly fat, beef lard, these are the healthy mediums to cook. And get your cholesterol up, but look after your insulin sensitivity. And you're true. I, okay, I, I, once, since questions have come, I don't mind. Yeah, I'll take it.
Good evening, Mr. Moitro. Pleasure to hear you on the wellness, diet, health, mobility. But as you talked about this cholesterol, this is actually in contradiction to what the medics say, which means if you get a lipid profile done, then they say that a good person, a good controlled cholesterol is anything where the level is.
This will only happen when you, when you slowly get deeper and deeper into exercise. So I'm telling you, it's, it's not, it's not just a physical thing. It's a therapeutic thing and you don't have to listen to people, your body will tell you. And for God's sake, do not listen to people. Yeah, it's, it's not rocket science. Movement is not rocket science. In fact, the most simple, the simple, uh, it's simple, just go there, learn the correct movement pattern. The movement patterns don't have to be dictated by an exercise physiologist. It's right there in man's survival pattern. Learn those patterns, learn to crawl, run, learn to run. And the biggest investment, if you can teach, running is a magic bullet to it. So our education system, our schools do not teach our children to run anymore. As parents, it is our responsibility to ensure that our children, that children only go to schools that can. We went to schools where, I went to Don Vosco, where the, where the principal, where the, uh, in the brothers, where, you know, the Roman Catholic school. They, they thought it was their responsibility to teach us these things. So we learned to, unfortunately, schools like that, I, I even question the schooling system. I mean, I don't know why children should even go to school today. But honestly, I mean, I, if I had my way, I would. If you, if the parents read books, if the parents are culturally active, if they understand painting, if they understand music, if they're, the child will turn out alright and academics is alright. It's not the end of the world. You'll cope. I know, I know, you know, the, sorry, there was a school, they, they follow the Arya Samaj way and, and so they're on a school some, somewhere in North Calcutta. So I met the parents, one in, one of the TTS Telegraph School and he said that I don't send, we have two boys, I don't send them to school, they study at home. So somebody asked them, what about the social skills? If they don't mix with other children, how will they, so they're enough, they play football, they go playing, you know, they go, they have singing class, they have dance class and they learn to cope. They, they, they learn to cope all right, one is an engineer and the other is a doctor. Right, and I know many, they, they, you know, it's, it's, I think, anyway.
Hello, yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Okay, since. No, no, okay. Okay, myself, Koshik. Since the bar is going to open, so my question is related to that. There are a lot of myths about around, you know, drinking alcohol. You know, doctors will never say that, you know, you go and drink, right? Officially, they will never say. But my question is that how much, one is the quantity, one peg, two peg, three peg, whatever, is.
No, this, it's, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Is, is, is okay to, for health, for all the aged persons here, whatever is our age? Number one, after a strong, hard day at office, is it okay to take one peg at home or wherever else? Or two peg is okay? And, and what, no, no, no. The next part is what kind of drink is, one pint of beer is good or whiskey or wine? If it is wine, red wine, white wine? What is permissible? If you can suggest something or something.
So, gentlemen, this, this one, yeah, I need to, I need to.
I have a supplementary question, okay? There's, there are a lot of myths going around, eating with alcohol, like the finger foods and all that. So what is a good time to have food before alcohol or after alcohol?
Okay, okay, good. So listen, here is the alcohol and here is the human being. So are we talking about the alcohol? Are we talking about the alcohol in this particular human being? The answer is not the same. All, I don't want to break, all alcohol is bad. There's no, there's nothing like one drink. There was one time, a glass of wine is good for you, that's a lot of, however, however. So we should never get into that attitude that, oh, I deserve it, oh, I need a drink. Okay, it's always accept to yourself, I want to drink. But here's the thing now, if that alcohol helps you to relax with friends, have a laugh, de-stress, it actually is beneficial for the, the alcohol is not. The company, the de-stressing, that, you know, and a couple of hours laughing with your friends and joking will again negate the ill effect of the alcohol. I don't mean that you guys should get pissed, yeah, but, but it, there's also enough research done on this that people who drink tend to outlive people who don't drink, not the kind of people who use and abuse alcohol. Who, I know people who get depression, use alcohol. But if this is extremely important, if you're going to a club and if you're going to sit down and you're going to mop over a drink and, and, and think about how difficult life is for you and how unfair life has been, it's going to kill you. So it's the situation rather than the drink. Alcohol is bad, right? There's no.
I have a question.
No, I'll answer Sambit's question. I'll answer Sambit's question. Okay. So alcohol is carbohydrates and this, this is really technical, the answer. Now carbohydrates, there's something called glycaemic index in the sense of how quickly the sugar is absorbed in the body. You can slow down the absorption of carbohydrates by adding protein or fat to it. The minute you add, so it's, for example, if you are having a toast and we say, a dry toast diya ja, no. The butter in the toast will make the toast less harmful. Toast is harmful, butter is beneficial. But I know people, got it? So if you, if you want to somehow reduce the ill effect of alcohol or letting alcohol make your blood sugar levels go up like that, try having something that is from another food group. Try avoiding carb, so don't have chips because it's got, because it's got more, you know, sugars. So you should be having meat, paneer and fat. So cheese is great, mutton is great, fish, any other kind of protein. So avoid having food that is nuts are love, nuts are great. I mean, again, you don't have to devour the whole corn, it was a couple of, you, and, eating, eating with alcohol is, is not a problem at all. That's the way it should be.
I have a question. Mr. Moitra, question is, we just, you just shared.
I'm not keeping you from my alcohol, I have a question, sir.
May I, may I, may I, may I? May I? Mr. Moitra will be here. We have the evening still going on, but not formally, will be an informal networking going on. So you can park your questions, ask him directly. But we have to stop here because the bar has to open and it's already 7:30, it's pretty late in the day. So we have to do this. However, taking cue from what Mr. Moitra said, I probably you all have had some bit of food already served. And so please appreciate the research that has gone into without getting the insight already, that we have kept adequate amount of protein and stuff to help you what you're going to have now, okay? So deserves some bit of appreciation, we, okay? Now, to do the honors, may I call Mr. Saravdas, President Philanthropic Technical Association? They are also our CXO Connect partner and Mr. Das is the CIO of Rupa and Company. So sir, if you could kindly do the honors, before that, before that, if you could speak a little bit about this Philanthropic Technical Association and this CXO Connect partnership that we have for the BITC. Two minutes maybe?
Sure, sure. So I think Sambit has put me in a very tough situation because we had a fantastic discussion going on and then we are on the verge of opening the bar. So I'll take exactly maybe 90 seconds. So a lot of us here know about Philanthropic Technical Association. For people who don't know, we are a group of IT leaders. We have come together for, you know, kind of bridging the industry academia gap. What we mean by that is we do things like internships, so where we take people from the academia, then try to give them training, try to absorb them in our organizations and make them industry ready. This is our pledge because where we stand in the, in the society, in the professional ladder today, maybe certain things that can help the next generation, just our way of doing it. Why we call it philanthropic? Because all the hours and all the efforts that we devote, you know, obviously we don't charge for that. We do it for the society, we feel it's our way to do it. We are also, apart from internships, what we are also doing is we are doing a lot of, you know, we go to colleges and there we tell them about what goes on in the industry. And we have, we are getting a fantastic response. A lot of colleges get in touch with us and say, you know, bring in a couple of CIOs and ask them to talk to us what happens and, and students really learn from there. We are also, you know, we engage with the industry fraternity and we look at master classes and things like that. We work very closely with Bengal Chambers, you know, and also we are in the verge of designing a course for some select students which will be delivered by CIOs. It's about a 56-hour course that will charge very minimum, maybe 50 rupees and make the students ready and give them training. Hundred rupees, sorry. So, so these are some of the activities that we do as a group. Again, myself and Satya, Gargi, Prakash, we are all here, we can, you know, any further questions, you can, you know, get in touch, we can discuss on this. But this is what we do. Again, sincere thanks to Bengal Chambers, I mean, we work very closely with each other. So that's, I hope I did not exceed my 90 minutes thing. Okay, Hakathan is also coming up. We are also working with few other fraternity partners in doing it from academia, right? And moreover, you know, as we network. So thank you, Sambit, and then.
Thank you, sir. We really appreciate your support and it's a privilege to be associated with PTA and we hope that this association grows strength to strength in the years to come. Yeah? So kindly do the honors, sir, to Mr. Moitra. Indeed, a great session and a lot of insights coming in. Okay, may I call Mr. Pathir Sen Gupta to give a token of appreciation to Mr. Saravdas, please?
Yes, you do. Alrighty, was almost going to be doomsday. I found a bottle has fallen down, but it has not broken. Fine, thank you so much. Okay? There you go, the bar's open, do your networking. Thank you so much for being here. You've been a lovely audience. Thank you so much. See you next year.